The 56th Regular Session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. invocation by, ulapas si Councilor J. So invocation by, ah, Isa Gusto mga J. Bernie, Councilor Bernie Espersia, invocation then followed by the singing with the Lupang Hinirang, then Kagayan di Oro March, please rise.
Manindog ang tanan, ano, ano, ano. Ang bispo, ano.
Alright, let's put ourselves in the Holy Presence of God in Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you Lord for another wonderful day, thank you Lord for the blessings, thank you Lord for the love. Salamat, Ginoo, say mo mga grasya, ngayon mong giha tagal mo. Lord bless us this afternoon for another session nga kami Lord, ah, matagaanimo o higayon na kami makadiskus sa mga klasiklasing mga argumento. And please Lord guide us in everything that we do as we speak, saunsa mong ipansultitanan Lord, kayo saraman ang tumong na kami makaserybisyo o kinipara sa katauhan. This we ask through Christ our Lord, amen.
Nang Pilipinas. Mayang magiliw, pero saan sila talan. Halam ng puso sa nititoy buhay. Lupang hinirang, kuyat ng magiting. Saman turupi, ikapasi sinil. Sa nadatang, tutung sa simoyan, sa labi kau pagka. May hina tang, tula kau isa, kung daya niyamahar. Ang isatang, ataw at wita, kuay ka na kini. Ang ituwi, at paro niya kayda, ang hayda ati dinin. Lupang aparo, niyang warabi, pa'si ka, kuyat ng itsa Pilipino. Ang iti gaya, na patay ng aming, ang patay ng gabi usay. Haban ang iyo, ang oras, haban ang love at city. Kaya ma'as iskribas, isasaysay, na'y bawat anden sa happy. Haban ang iyo, ang oras, haban ang love at city. Diya singin, besesin, oras oram, to'is in. The great way to the land, promise ringan, on'ton for the sake. It's a mission, and the class, to serve the river free. The god in the nation, oh, Lord. Heda, pa'as may gus, at'ing may gus, o'se last na. Edits may ishoy, yu'ng bata'y ra. Haban ang iyo, ang grace, haban ang love at city. Ang lingi, pa'ni, o'ni, furo'y ba'ni, o'ni, su'as ay. Haban ang iyo, ang grace, haban ang love at city. Si'ngan, o'ni, 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 o'ni.
Please be seated, Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Joselyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. For the First District Councilors, Honorable Agapito E. Roberto G. Swan, Honorable Roger G. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Aimy Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George S. Goaking, Honorable Jose P. PS Abu Jr., Honorable Malburn E. Espasia. For the Second District Councilors, Honorable Ivona Yasin B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lourdes S. Gani, Honorable Jalen Mercedes El Balaba on birthday leave, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Yunakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico Imachas, Honorable Suzette G. Magtahas Tabak. For the Ex-Official Members, Honorable Yan Lam Es Lim, Liga ng Mga Barangay President, and Honorable Jan Michael El Sano, City Escape Federation President, Teresa Corom, Madam Presiding Officer.
Corom is hereby certified. Good afternoon, Councilors, good afternoon, our friends, guests, of course, friends from the media who are here, our Kagayanos who are watching us today, may hapon sa tanan. Ah, Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer, our beloved Vice Mayor, Bibut Rodriguez. Members of the City Council, guests who are with us this afternoon, members of the media, people who are watching us in their respective social media platforms. Again, good afternoon. May I move, Madam Chair, to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous regular session of this council on October 14, 16, 2023, and consider the furnishing thereof as reading itself.
Any second? Any objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve the second final reading.
Second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Business of the day, we proceed, there is no special report because we have visitors who will be with us this afternoon. Item one, proposed ordinance number 2023-2E3, establishing the Paleng QRPH Plus program of Kageyan di Oro City and enjoining for the purpose public market vendors, sarisari store owners, tricycle operators, and driver associations, and other local merchants to adopt the QRPH digital payment and for other purposes. We have invited as speakers this afternoon, Madam Chair, the Area Director, Banco Central ng Pilipinas, Kageyan di Oro Branch, Kageyan di Oro City, Mr. Oligario Magahin Jr. and his staff, I think. This ordinance is authored by Councilor Goaking and co-authors, Councilors Ivona Yasin, Imano, Honorable Agapito E. Roberto Swan, Councilor Malburn Espasia, and Councilor James Judith. May I request, Madam Chair, that we suspend the rules to allow other personalities and members of the City Council to speak before us.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Without Madam Chair, may I request that Mr. Oligario Magahin be recognized?
Okay, Mr. Oligario, ah, what's the last name?
Olig Magahin.
Magahin, yes, good afternoon sir, you have the floor sir. May hapon.
Hello, our beloved Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer of this City Council, Mam Depat Rodriguez, Vice Mayor. The esteemed members of this City Council, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Allow me first to thank this August body for giving the Banco Central ng Pilipinas an opportunity to speak about the Paleng QRPH Plus initiative. I will give a brief overview of the program and later a colleague from the BSP Regional Economic Affairs Staff of our Mindanao Regional Office based in Davao City will provide a detailed walkthrough of this program. On behalf of the BSP, I stand before you today to address a topic of great significance that has the potential to transform CDOs, economy, and the way we conduct financial transactions. No less than the President of the Republic, President Ferdinand Marcos Jr., in a statement in June this year, 2023, has expressed his support to the enforcement of the BSP DILG Paleng QRPlus initiative, saying he wants government agencies to educate Filipinos on the use of e-wallet and other digital applications. The Paleng QRPlus program jointly developed by the BSP and the Department of Interior and Local Government seeks the Policy Championship and enjoins local government units to push for the acceptance of digital payments among market vendors, community shopkeepers, and tricycle operator and drivers in all cities and municipalities in the country. BSP and DILG signed in June 2022 a joint memorandum circular of Paleng QRPlus enjoining LGUs to push for the acceptance of digital payments by customers to market vendors and public transportation drivers across the country. The Paleng QRPlus program highlights the significance of market purchases and local transportation fares as basic components of an average Filipino typical payment pattern. Until a market vendor and tricycle driver can accept digital payments, transitioning to cashless transactions would be difficult for average Filipino customer. The objective of the program is to promote account ownership using the QRPH, which is the national QR code standard. Yung mga bulagna'y barcode barcode mo ng QR standard na to, that allows the transfers between participating banks and the e-wallets. The BSP is very extremely excited that the Kageyan di Oro City, that we already reached this far. BSP has always been a vocal advocate for digitalization and fintech advancements in the Philippines and we therefore fully support an ordinance for the adoption of said Paleng QRPH Plus program in Kageyan di Oro City. Paleng QRPH Plus is a key initiative to promote a standardized and interoperable QR code payment system in the country. Launched in November 2019, QRPH is the national QR code standard which serves as the instrument for cost-effective digital payments, whether for person-to-person or for person-to-merchant transactions. QRPH standard is therefore not new, but its application has been limited in most part to cater to big businesses such as department stores, shops inside the mall, and restaurants. What the Paleng QRPH program wishes to accomplish is simply to introduce the benefits and advantages of the QRPH standard to our market and transportation partners. Further, the National Strategy for Financial Inclusion, or NSFI, for the years 2022 to 2028 includes as one of the top priority initiatives the promotion of digital payments in markets and local transport by utilizing the QRPH. Promoting digital payments among market vendors and transportation partners is therefore critical in expanding the country's digital payment ecosystem toward greater financial inclusion. The program also supports country's sustainable development agenda. Today, we are happy to announce that BSP has led the launching of the Paleng QRPlus program in cities like Baguio, Cebu, Davao, Naga, Tagbilaran, Pasay, Lapu-Lapu, Mandawi, Bacolod, and Osamis, and the towns of Kabiling, Intalak, and Calmona in Cavite Province. More cities and municipalities are expected to launch the Paleng QRPH Plus program in the remaining months of 2023. For the Kageyan di Oro City, we already have taken many steps on this initiative beginning with our technical briefing with the Honorable Mayor, Rodanda Clarex Aue on April 20, 2023. We also would like to thank Councilor George Goaking and the Committee on Trade and Commerce for hearing BSP and taking the initiatives leading us here today. We would also like to acknowledge the stakeholders in this program who actively participated in the various consultations conducted by the Committee on Trade and Commerce, namely the Cogan Market Vendors Association, the Oro Chambers of Commerce, the DIC Region 10, which will provide a free bandwidth Wi-Fi connectivity to the Cogan, Carmen, and Buluak markets once we launch the Paleng QR program under the Free for All or FW4A program to address the initial concerns of the lack of internet connection in the markets. Also DIC 10 promises to provide the much-needed cybersecurity and cyber hygiene seminars to provide the much-needed online security and prevent so-called hacking ng mga accounts. and to prevent so-called hacking ng mga accounts. The financial service providers who assured us that they have a robust customer redress system and restitution policy if loss is not the fault of the customers. They also assured us that they have a workaround procedure for cash-out transactions during prolonged internet outages. DILG's CDOS Director Jane Bocales was also here and lent support during the consultation deliberation of the Paleng QR+ program in the Committee on Trade and Commerce. We understand the intention of Kagan de Oro is to first start with the public markets before we move on to the other merchants and transportation sector. We support this approach because it is a more calibrated approach rather than having a one-time big-time launch of the program in all sectors. In the end, there are still people who prefer cash transactions over digital payments. The Paleng QR+ program does not really foresee a totally cashless society, but rather towards a cash-light one. So not cashless, but more on the cash-light economy. The program empowers the public and the consumers to have all available payment system. So if he or she wants to pay cash, that she will be allowed. But the covered merchants and local transportation should make digital payments available. Consumers, they can choose all the payment options they want. They could pay in cash, but if they decided to pay on the digital, the vendors and the future mga drivers natin should have a terminal for the digital payments. So, dala pugsa na idali, si consumer, they could choose. Kung cash lang, there would be people really nga mas prefer nila cash. Magbayad sila cash, fine, under the program, allow dagehapon ang cash payment. I have gone too long already because I am so excited and very optimistic. I will have to end my introduction here to give way to the more detailed walkthrough presentation about the program by my colleague Ms. Angela Pamaran from the BSP Regional Economic Affairs Staff. Daghan salamat sa siyudad sa Kagan de Oro, o sa iyahang mga opisyalas, o sa tanan nga mga partners nato sa financial sector, o labina sa tanan tao nga magamit ani. Mayong hapon sa iyong tanan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Oligario Magahin Jr. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if you allow me to have my colleague present the...
Okay, sure, sure. Ma'am, kindly please introduce your name, please.
Hello. Hi. Mayong hapon sa tanan. Mayong hapon. I am Noel Angela Pamaran of BSP Mindanao Regional Office, that's in Davao City. And I would like to say hi to our Vice Mayor, City Councilors, friends in the media, and our guests. So thank you so much. We are very honored for this invitation. And as to echo what Sir Gary Magahin mentioned kanina, we have had meetings, dialogues, presentations since April pa. So actually, this is the sixth time already and we are very happy that we are considering this, the Paleng QRPH program. Now, some of you might have already seen the presentation. Consider this as a refresher of the Paleng QRPH+ program. But for those who have not yet seen it, let's explore the possibility. Let's consider what Paleng QRPH+ is offering us. So what is Paleng QRPH+? A lot of people are really wondering ano ba yan? Some might think it's an application or a mobile application, an online application, whatever that may be. No, it's not. Paleng QRPH+ is technically a program. It's a program, it's a framework, a collaborative framework between Banco Central ng Pilipinas and DILG. So the purpose really here is to build an ecosystem that accepts digital payment. It's not a requirement, again, to build an ecosystem that accepts digital payment, not necessarily to require everyone to use digital payment, but to make it available so that if people would opt to pay for digital payment, then well, there you go, diba? Meron na tayo. Now, we also want to promote cashless payments in public markets, local transportation sectors through the QRPH. Now, we have heard of online payments. I know most of you guys have transferred money, sent funds, etc., using online. But the question here, do you use QRPH? Ano ba tong QRPH? Ganito kasing itsura niyan. Ay, ito, ito muna, ito muna, for us to have more appreciation of what QRPH is. Just as a backgrounder, we have two automatic clearing houses, Pesonet and Instapay. So if we all recall, the checks, cheke dati, we use, we send payment, we use our checks through the clearing houses. Now, when it's already online, Pesonet and Instapay, we have two automatic clearing houses. They both are different. Pesonet gagamitin siya if there is malaki ang babayaran. No more than 50,000, we use Pesonet. We want to send a million pesos to our suppliers, we use Pesonet. Although, ang Pesonet, it's not instant, so it's by batch payment. Instapay, dito na nahuhulog ang QRPH. Si Instapay naman, on the other hand, is, ang purpose niya is to make instant payment, that's why the term Instapay. It's interoperable, that's why we're highlighting here, it's an interoperable national QR code standard. So, we will be scanning QR codes, ganitong itsura niya. This is the QR code. Nung pandemic, some LGUs have used QR code to scan kung kayo ay pumasok sa isang establishment. QR code is the same idea. You'll be scanning your, using your device. You'll be scanning using your device and then lalabas dyan kung ano 'yung intention mo. Now, for QRPH, you have to open first your online banking app, your mobile app, and then if you want to send money, scan using QR and then magpapadala na. So it's instant and it's interoperable. What do I mean by interoperable? I do believe we understand the meaning of instant, agad-agad, instantaneous, milliseconds, it's there. Now, when we say interoperable, from one bank, if we only want to have one bank. Ayon yo ng maraming bangko. Gusto niyo lang ng, let's say, All Bank. You just want All Bank because it's easy to monitor. You just want one bank. So you chose All Bank. You want to pay. You want to pay, pumunta ka sa palengke, pumunta ka sa mall, pumunta ka sa bus station, and you want to pay using QRPH, of course. And they only have either Maya, Sebuana, or AUB. And you have All Bank lang. You can still pay using your All Bank account, scan the QR code of Maya, of Sebuana, of AUB. Those are just examples, okay? And once you did, magpapadala na po siya. Now, what is good about the QRPH person-to-merchant? There's a person-to-person. Person-to-person, this was mentioned by Sir Gary kanina. Person-to-person is, individual account ko, I want to send to, let's say, to Vice Mayor Rodriguez. Usually, if ibat-ibang banks, it will incur a charge, diba? We have tried that. It will incur a charge. Now, if it's person-to-merchant, bangko ko, and I will be paying to ano bang malapit na mall dito, let's say, Gaysano. Magbabayad ako. They have a merchant account, I will be scanning it. What's good about this is, it's free of charge. If the account, nasaan ka magpapadala, is a merchant account, it's usually free of charge. Who shoulders the expense, it's actually the merchant. It's actually the merchant. So, the benefits of P2M QRPH is, number one, it's real-time. Number two, it's free of charge. There is no cap on transaction amount. And kung gusto mo bumili ng sasakyan, and you have 3 million in your account and you want to pay using QRPH, you can. There's no cap on transaction amount. And works in physical and online stores. So you don't need to be there. If you have the QR code of the merchant, then that's good to go. So those are the benefits of it. These are just some samples of the national QRPH standard. I would like to highlight the logo na nandyan sa gitna ng QR code na yan. The QR code is the box, there's the logo in between. Itong logo na yan, the blue, yellow, red logo, that's QRPH logo. And when we say it has QRPH logo, it means na siya ay, number one, interoperable and that is already under the QRPH standard of Banco Central. And yung mga QR code na nandyan sa harap, totoo po yan. So if you want to send us money, just for sample, pwede niyo pong scan yan ngayon mismo, pwede kayong bahala magkano. So, dito naman, sa next slide natin, those are QR codes that is not compliant to the national QRPH standard. So, it means if you have a Shopee account and you will scan another Shopee account, okay lang. Pero if meron kayong, let's say, Land Bank, let's say, what, BDO, Metro Bank, PNB, you will scan that hindi po siya magread. Hindi po siya magread. So hindi po siya compliant, it's okay, okay lang, okay lang yun for them, but it means hindi po siya interoperable. Okay, so these are some examples. Now, what is the aim of the Paleng QRPH program? We have been using QRPH, we have been using online payment. Di pa natin masyadong embrace yan before the pandemic, but now that, since the pandemic and until now, we have embraced it already. It's already part of us. Nakita natin 'yung benefits niya. That's why what we aim to happen here is to just capitalize, kasi nandyan na siya, nandyan na si QRPH. We want it to be capitalized so that it will form part of our policies already. And through the LGU, the LGU will champion, champion the program of Paleng QRPH and to push for the acceptance of the digital payment. Saan? Kasi sa malls, marami na. Marami ng nakatatak dyan sa malls. However, we don't usually see it where? Markets, transportation, sa maliliit na merchants. And from Banco Central mismo, we see the need for them to be included. Paleng QRPH is a program under financial inclusion and nabanggit ni Sir Gary, National Financial Inclusion Program of a strategy of Banco Central. We want everyone to be included, not just those na nasa mall, not just those na bumibili ng kung ano-ano sa mall, but also those who buy fish sa market vendors, na bumibili ng bigas. Everyone, we want them to be included in all cities and municipalities in the country. Now, what are the components of the Paleng QRPH program? Very straightforward, tatlo lang po. Number one, it's the policy issuance. Since the Paleng QRPH is a collaborative framework between Banco Central ng Pilipinas and DILG, meron tong joint memorandum circular. And we can only act on it if there is a support from the local government units. And the support is shown through the policy issuance. And itong policy tanay ito ay ordinance. It's an ordinance mandating or incentivizing the acceptance of QRPH payments in public markets, local transportation, and other merchants. From there, if meron na po tayong ordinance, meron din tayong tinatawag na account onboarding and account onboarding of merchants and drivers. So dito papasok ang ating financial service providers. Itong financial service providers, we do not want to just say banks, kasi Gcash is not a bank, it's an e-wallet. Maya is a digital bank and well, there are different kinds of technical terms to that. Pero if you want to have an umbrella covering them all, they're called financial service providers or payment service providers. So, we will be inviting them and through them, mag-oopen ng account ang mga merchants, drivers, para maging included sila. And they will now be accepting QRPH payment or online payments. And lastly, part of the program is also financial literacy. And dito po papasok ang Banco Central ng Pilipinas and, yes, DIC. See, DIC and BSP will be providing financial literacy programs to the market vendors, consumers, to the drivers, para alam natin kung paano gamitin, anong tamang paggamit, how to protect yourself pag ginagamit natin ang online banking. Okay? So, these are the phases. We have three phases. The pre-launch, the program launch, and the post-launch. The pre-launch, and dito tayo ngayon, and dito tayo. BSP conducts briefings to the LGUs so that we may gain the support of the LGU. Once there is support from the LGU, ang bola ay nasa LGU na, okay? The ball is already in the hands of the LGU. And BSP will just wait for the ordinance to be passed and once it is passed, gagalaw na po tayong lahat. So what would happen here now? Usually, we want, no BSP, what we do? We want to provide financial literacy before the launch and after the launch. Why? Kapag before the launch, at least the market vendors, the drivers, the merchants, hindi mabibigla. Alam nila, hindi 'yung upon launch pa lang, mag-oopen ba ako? I don't know what to do kasi hindi pa sila nakapagfinancial literacy. So they may have some haka-haka, they may have some fears. So gusto namin, before the launch pa lang, masasara na po 'yung mga notions nila. So during the launch naman, there will be a public launch. It's depending sa LGU, if it's going to be big, if it's going to be small, kung sino ang i-invite, kung sino ang mga kasali, there will be an account opening. And andyan po 'yung financial service providers, andyan si Banco Central, andyan ng LGU. The LGU and BSP will assist sa account onboarding ng mga market vendors. And then, there will be banners, streamers, sometimes provided by the financial service providers and sometimes also provided by the LGU. And then there will be, kumbaga, a blast sa social media, sa media, kung anong meron. There will be a launch, etc., and soon that Kagan de Oro will be a Paleng QR-ready city na. After the launch, yes po.
Did you raise your hand? Okay, Counselor Ian Mark Takaya, you have the floor.
I am 100% supportive to this endeavor, Madam Presiding Officer. But before the launch, maybe we can make a discussion... But, uh, before the launch, maybe we can, uh, make a discussion about, uh, the program. At any rate, uh, first, uh, excuse our ordinance, our ignorance as regards the, uh, Paleng QR.
Paleng QR.
Paleng QR.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a program. And, uh, I have read through the, the proposal, and, uh, it's not even just for palengke or transportation, but, uh, considering that the, the scope has no limitations. In fact, I, I could not browse over my phone right now, but, uh, it has no limitation, in other words, it's already an ordinance for all establishment, whether you are industrial, transport, uh, palengke and all. So, we need to change the, the, uh, the title of the proposed ordinance.
What was the title?
The title specifies, uh, and limits the, the introduction of the all-in, uh, measure or nature of the, uh, of the ordinance. I am all out, Madam Presiding Officer, in terms of, uh, include everyone, include every industry. Uh, if we start right, we start, not necessarily you call it big, but, uh, you start it, uh, bright for, for the city of Cagayan dioro. So, no limitations. In fact, the nature and the scope speaks it all, that it has no limit. Okay, here's my ignorance. Though you mentioned interoperability, it, uh, means that, uh, the Paleng QR is connected to, uh, the financial institutions, right?
Um, Paleng QR PH plus is a program, yes, opo. But, uh, it champions the use of QRPH, QRPH.
QRPH.
It's a facility, it's a facility, or the QR code standard, wherein lahat naman ng financial institutions ay meron. So, it's not connected, it's a facility used by the financial institutions.
That's a better explanation. Thank you. So, in other words, it's a program, it's a campaign, it's a advocacy of the government, and, uh, if it is an ordinance, it mandates the establishment of each and every, uh, business to provide this type of service. In other words, uh, be it Gcash, be it, uh, other, uh, facility, is that correct? Is that correct?
Sir, pakiuulit ngayon, sir. We, we do not really want to use the word mandate, no? It means you're requiring, requiring, although probably there's, uh, it, it means something else for the local government unit. Pero, yes po, um, what, what we are aiming here is for the vendors to at least have one.
Okay.
To at least have one, kasi interoperable naman siya. And if they have one, kung sino, uh, Gcash is very, um, de ba acceptable naman, pero kung merong iba na may Maya, they will just scan the Gcash of the vendor, pwede din yun.
So, it's, it's now more, more clear, Madam Presiding Officer. So, in other words, uh, there is no one specific
No.
facility that the government is trying to advocate.
Wala po.
None at all.
Wala, oh. We do not want to endorse any one specific na FSPs.
Relative to this, is there a national law that, uh, mandates, requires, uh, establishments to put up
The entire, you mean?
This type of facility?
And, uh, facility, the, to have a QR code, kumbaga ganun. Um, ang GMC, the, uh, the GMC covers market vendors and tricycle drivers, but as to the big establishments, wala po tayong, di ba? This is a free market, so wala tayong may magkaroon kayo ng QRPH. But, in all honesty, it, it, it will really happen in the future because of all of us using online naman talaga. So, that's why, even without this, may mga pindahan na talaga na may QR, uh, may QR code.
So, if this is the, the program, the Paleng QR, and this is the establishment,
Mm-hmm.
and you have all the, uh, facilities, online payments facilities, the Gcash, the PayMaya, the banking, uh, online.
Okay.
Okay, so, there's nothing that connects between the program and all these facilities, right? Yes or no?
Tekka, tekka, I, I am not getting you. What do you mean by not connect? Sige daw, sir.
Sige, sige. Bisaya, English, Tagalog?
Sige, makasabot man ko, bisaya.
Claro na. Kay, inaniman, uh, though it's a program,
Mm-hmm.
it's a national government program, as you have stipulated, it's Banco Central and the ILG.
Yes, po.
And now, we are going down to the LGUs for the support and for the motion of this, uh, program.
Yes, po.
In the, uh, in the, in the market and in all establishments. This is the Paleng QR.
Yes.
Then the, these are the facilities, because you said that it's not connected to any financial institution, correct?
Yes, po.
So far, correct sa'ko.
Correct, correct, sir.
Pag gumanda yun is, di man, di, di ikaw gusto mandate, di join, di enlist na'to ang mga establishments, ang mga palengke, nga mo, mo adopt ani nga program.
Yes, oo.
Pero di siya connected ani nga facility. In other words, advocacy is just for people to recognize that this modern time, ni, necessary ni ni sila.
Yes, yes, to appreciate it, opo. Tama po, wala po, may, may gap, no? There's a gap.
Okay, ah, padalunin siya na ma'am.
Sige, sir, sige, sir, go.
Para mas claro pag yun. Kay, it will, it might reveal sa duhakang legislative measures nga pwidi.
Mm-hmm.
First is, of course, to support, uh, the Banco Central, the, the ILG, the national government's initiative. But in the local, kay, nagkaproblemang mayanin QR code sa una ma'am.
Uy, pang bakit?
Dito sa, sa itawag ni ni Ana, ng, ng panghatag nila sa national. Pag gumanda yun is, ang sakamigin nga QR code, lahi. Ang Cagayan dioro nga QR code, lahi. Uh, pag abot sa lahin sa Sydney, lahi. Delete, gawaton, delete. Uh, Madam Vice Mayor, this is reality. Uh, unsa manikaroon, delete connected ang program sa mga financial institutions dahil, uh, unsa'y role ani nga, nga QRPH sa kaning engagement between, kaniya akong dibutang nga lower strata, may dini ang upper strata, the program and the facilities, unsa may involvement nila dini nga mo connect sa QR.
Uh, ano na lang, sir, uh, let be, ano lang, uh, the BSP, diba, BSP under supervision, 'yung mga banks, and 'yung mga BSP, si mga FSP, si mga Maya. And the BSP has mandated, mga around July, uh, 3 months ago, for all financial institutions, uh, to adapt the Paleng QR, uh, the QR code. So, wala na, wala na exception, kung, kung, wala ka nga ng standard, di na mabasa sa lahin nga bank. Basically, ang QR code is just, na may mga di, instead of typing ang account number, the name, ang QR code individually, unique na sa imo ha? So, pag mag-scan ka na for payment, actually, uso na kung kuwan ko, eh, pwede po, pagpadalat, padalat ang kwarta, QR code lang imong hatag, sure na na nga makaabot sa imo ha? Delete, masayok ang.
Connectado sa financial institution.
Yeah. Uh, sa ilahan ka ng sa, actually, na may, naamad yun ni sila IT kuwan. Yes, connectado, sir, kay, kailangan maninom.
So, pwidi ma-loadan o kwarta ang imong QR code?
Ano, no, sir, delete sa sir, code lang sa sir.
Institution, baka banko.
Institution lang.
So, what is the role of the, excuse me? So, what is the role of the Banco Central now? For, for what reason?
Advocacy.
Is the Banco Central, are they, are they there for just monitoring?
Actually, is, is implementing. Sa mga medyo karaan-karan, pagyahan ako. Before, diba, mo transfer ka't banko sa, uh, France, isa ka't banko, sa tambuhatan, mo ato ka si imong banko, mo withdraw, then mo ato na po ka si imong transferan banko, mo deposit, that's the old system, diba? Then finally, nagchange na, nga within same bank, maka-transfer ka, online transfer ka, same bank lang. Pero other bank, delete pa ka transfer. But with the QR code, bisag lain nga banko, basta na iQR code lang ka, maka-transfer na ka. That, that's basically ang ikaw sa BSP.
So, the question now is that, the QR code maintains only in Cagayan dioro. If you want to purchase outside, that is precisely why I questioned that before. The QR code of the different cities, and they have the same QR code.
Talihan lang, eh. Anyway, isa lang na.
I want the co-authors to answer the question, come here, inside, kamu. Kamu may nagtuunan eh, bisaya na'to.
The last question sa.
Oh, sige, last question.
Before the co-authors, uh.
Pag tuhodin mo roon.
Nakabisita man ko gamay sa, I, I would like to push the advocacy further. Kasabot na ko, uh, there, there is no connection, pero atong mga financial institution, pwidi naman katayong muisulti sa.
But, time for them.
Even without this, uh, QR, uh, uh, palengke, uh, pwidi, natistingan na na'to, bisag sa Shopee o sa Lazada. Anyway, uh, ang ako is, why not i-push further na'to ang program? Like, dito sa Sydney is, okay, universal imong card for taxi, for mass transit. Then you, if it is loaded with the money, you, you can use to purchase, uh, uh, something from, from the establishment. So, it's a national program. It did not require, I guess, sa local government unit to, to do the cadiles of, uh, the campaign, because if it is a national, it's universal, it requires all. And if we really want to live to the modern age of, uh, e-commerce, we have to be universal in, in our approach. Uh, we don't want to see the Philippines seeing Davau City is, uh, has progressed to, to a ninth level, and Cagayan dioro, 8, then the Batangas, 5, and 4. So, delete kayo balanse ang, ang development. Uh, nanasya sa timeline sa development. I already have my own opinion and observations sa kaning, uh, proposed ordinance. I will render it, uh, as a proposal sa, sa, sa during discussion. But for our guest, kana lang a final question, thank you.
Actually, Madam Chair, ang kuwan niya, kana, tapulato sa Australia, kana sa mga, toka Thailand, napos sila ikwan ito, uh, Japan, sa, or ano. Basically, it, under, inana concept, it's the e-wallet. Pero, lalaki card, na, na loadan na lang ni mo, sir. Actually, it's compatible with this, ano, with this.
Di maghistoria, daka inana, sir, compatible, sir, pwidi ma-loadan ang imong QR code?
Ah, delete, delete.
Ah, delete, delete.
Ka QR code, naka, nara si account nga, naka, nakalinkian mo na sa account.
So, delete, compatible. Now, let's not confuse the public, karo lang na'to gamay.
Uh, ang QR code, pero, lalaguan ko, sir, nga automatic lang, uh, na i.
So, delete pa ma-loadan.
Mabasa imong alan, okay.
Okay.
Okay, we're done.
Kana lang a question.
Last question?
Di, 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 wala pa na tubog.
Ah, wala pa na tubog?
Unsa'y direction, kay, para may bala na'to.
Sige lang, si proceed.
Eh, national intitute ni sila.
Okay, proceed.
Unsa'y, unsa'y timeline, kunang magaling timeline, nga mo abot na taan na sa e-commerce.
Actually, kanin atong program, as, as mentioned, yani sa opening, kuwan ako, let's, uh, this is an overarching framework ni siya. We could, as you mentioned, we could include other sectors nga kuwan. But, uh, ang among kuwan lang sa karon, let's start lang sa small with the market vendors, then eventually, we'll expand to the.
Timeline, timeline.
Ang timeline, sir, actually, we, we will, we will defer actually to the LGU, sir, kunsa'y timeline na'to.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mangahin Junior, and ma'am, thank you very much. Let me listen to the co-author, be. The co-author, I want to listen to the co-author. Okay, uh, Counselor EB, first, dahil, uh, Counselor Bernie, kisapay lang co-author. Bisaya akong gusto, ha? Okay, Counselor EB, kauna. Convince the public, gusto ko bisaya, convince the public, nga unsa ni kaimportante in your own knowledge, in your own understanding. Okay, we've been listening, Englishman to, Banco Central, then Tagalog, they want bisaya. Then, sunod kisapay lang co-author, adjust a one line, two lines. Aga suwan, Bernie and Judith, go, kamu opa. Autor man na, sige lang. Oh, delete, kamu, kamu, appeal man mo, kamu sa una. Sige, ipasabot lang yun ninyo ang public. Kay, karon, bisan pa i-explain, no? Delete ka na ako, masabtan, katon ka na minaw, karon, di ka nakasabot. I want in your own language, bisaya, go, kamu opa, sige.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and to everyone, our distinguished guests from the, uh, Banco, sa man.
Wait sa, ipatindog ko na ni, pat kay, only one liner, kamu, para you convince the public, go. Sir, salamat kay Linggo sa sir, ha? Sige, sige, ikaw na, kadi man mo manindog. Precisely why, para isumpay ra, oh, aga suwan, oso. Kana bisaya lang, nga maconvince 'yung masabtan. Okay, karon, EB, kauna.
Okay.
The simplest form lang, bisaya, okay?
Okay, okay.
Kay, sa ako, karon, wala na kasabot. Kung watong mo sa palengke, QR code, ato pa mo merkado, guban pa, nga na minaw, di ka na makasabot. Sige, go, pero one line, two lines, okay, na.
Okay, Madam Chair, may I?
Yeah, please.
Again, distinguished guests, Madam Chair, good afternoon. Sa akong pagsayaw, pasabot with, um, explanation of the Banco Central.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not referring to the banko, the way you understand.
Yes, that's why, because they made a report, sila may nagreport, Madam Chair.
No, no, you're the co-author, you're supposed to know everything. When I, when I co-author, then I should know, in my own dialect and in my own understanding. Do not depend on them. Sige lang, kay, kaba laman ko, na, kay, nasabtan na na, go.
Of course.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, sa akong pagsabot.
Yeah.
Okay, ang kanin parang QR, katawa si Attorney Paholto sa likod. Ang palengke QR, Paleng QR is an app that is, kuwan siya, cash light, pasabot, delete siya kinanglan nga, if.
The mechanics, I'm going to the mechanics.
Lagi, kadali lang, Madam Chair, I'm getting there. Uh, gina-encourage na'to ni siya sa, gagmay nga transportation, motorola, jeep.
Okay, bisaya na na, okay, sige, go.
Appeal sa small nga, ginagmay nga mga degosyante, sa, ka ng mga asstante, kana sa merkado, kana sa gapa maligya, baka ugula, tubig, any, masyon sa, nga product. Ngadili kinahanglan, para sa ako, safe siya para sa mga magbaligya o para sa magpalit.
Okay.
Kay, delete kinahanglan nga magbitbit o cash ang.
So, cellphone ra, ang da doon.
Yes, basta kay na atong QR code.
Sumamundo ka, ukuwartapod, sa asan ni ibutang?
Cash light siya, Madam Chair, meaning naa kay dala nga cash, pero delete siya, ka ng hawira ni mo nga kwarta.
Nagdala ka cash?
You have cash.
QR code ni mo, asa mo to ihatap ang imong ibayad?
Imo siyang iload, cash light siya, Madam Chair.
Maload sa siya una, iload sa siya una, ayan imo kamupresen.
Yes.
Okay, sige.
So, similar siya with PayMaya, parehas, parehas siya with PayMaya.
Okay.
Example, for example, storya man ta'og kwarta, storya man ta'og palit.
Oh.
So, kunakay palitun, Madam Chair, nga mo kantidad ug 10,000. Delete kinanglan nga gehawid ka ug 10,000, nga naa kay posibilidad nga, simba ko maholdap ka, makawatan ka, delete na siya mawala sa imo, taniwala unsa ka gamay, unsa ka dako sa kantidad.
Okay.
So, muna nga, ako, ako nang gina-encourage, na binaka, kasabot man talisod ang panahon
Okay.
na 'yung mga tulis, kawat, malikayan.
Okay, okay, so, meaning cashless, so wala kuwan. Did you do the public consultation? You are now going into the process na inyong pasabton ang public. Where did you do, public consultation? Merkado, driver, kinsan na magrupa, did you? I will be seeing the record.
Yes.
No, I'm asking now, na himo na pa ninyo ang public consult, because this is not among discussion sa kuwan kay, this is the public. No, I am asking, Counselor EB, did you do? Where, where?
No, ma'am, we did not.
Okay, you did not, okay, Counselor, Attorney James.
Madam Chair, dibasin namo sa mooy, uh, kanin pagpasabot sa BSP.
Imong pagsubot, ayaw sa sila. Doing public, can listen and understand.
Yes, Madam Chair, yes, Madam Chair. Base bali sa, yun sa BSP, naghimo sila ug, kanin, uh, pati gayon sila, okay ng, sila kuno ang maghimobali sa kanin pagpasabot sa katong mga stakeholder.
Ayaw na na, I don't want to listen. Ayaw na na, I don't want to listen, kaya kamu may mga co-author, you should know. Ang inyo ng dialect, ayaw ng BSP, they are the ano, ipasabot sa ang public, they are now listening. Say imong, say imong bisaya na pagpasabot.
Okay, so. Madam Chair, okay, katung sabahin sa para awareness bali sa atong katauhan. Mauna sa BSP, ala ko pagsubot, i naning, ano na co-author kuwan ni Madam Chair. Simple lang, murad Gcash, Madam Chair. So pakatunim mo, isang sampu.
O di na ko gusto baliko, panimo ka Counselor, ang manaman na. Ang imo pang lain na point of view, nga imong nasabtan, ayaw pagbalik malikayan, so di na.
Yes, Madam Chair, una digital ID, matapos sa rato na, digital ID, Madam Chair. Kaniyang atong digital ID, monedami ang universality din sa concept. Ngapwede ni mo magamit sa maskiunsa kaya tanan na man na to nga sistema. Na ano may identify, na ano may gamitong bali ng murad QR code ni mo nga, ikaw na siya, ikaw na siya, ikaw na siya, ikaw na siya. Base sa digital ID.
Ano imong kuarta, with the QR code, is it protected?
Yes.
Yes.
Para sa Gcash, except la kumahap.
Okay, Counselor.
Wala na, balisunod.
Abusan ni sila Counselor, kaya you, the co-authors, you should know, di ba? Okay, kaysa ang BSP, di magin masabtan sa viewing public.
Yes.
Unya, syempre Tagalog sa damo sa di kay masabtan. Pinaka simplest nga form nga ma, masabtan sa publiko, may akong gusto, Counselor Bernie. So ang imo, protected, ang imo kuarta.
Yes, para sa Gcash, Madam Chair.
Oo, protected na. Kaya magitan sa malangka, butan na malangka. Pero kani ang ilang konsept, Madam Chair, wala kuarta. Wala kuarta, perusado magban Gcash, wakay kuarta sa institution. Patayod lagi, okay, di arka koto, Counselor Bernie.
Mayong hapon, kanan tong tanan.
Ayaw apil ka, aga, Counselor, aga apil ka, sige si Counselor.
Ang kaniyang palengke QR, again, akong laruhon, di li nisya software. Di li nisya kanang app na i-download, okay? Bura na siya campaign sa BSP.
Okay.
Ang ilang katuyuan nga dapat naanay option. Ang kinalamagin ni siya, gay exist na yun ang PayMaya, Gcash, gay exist na ni siya.
Okay.
Ang ato lang, painusga na to, supportang, para sa LG, nga tanan, to the level of the driver, to the palengke na maligya ay uga mga koto, berit, isda. Na dapat na na sila option nga kung di li ko gusto magcash, mag-online ko.
Di ba gimo na man na to?
Muna di, wala man talag insis, matuto tagal sa kogon, pwede pa sila maingonog, wala may Gcash. Pero sumili to si kaniyang ordinance, ato di sila iin, kuwan nga ma'am, tanan, naanay option, kaya di hatnaman tapadulong.
Give me the cities that are now successfully doing the palengke.
Ang Davao, sugod naman ang Davao.
As a good, a city na successful na ani, we can always ano.
Ma'am, depende sa atong definition of what's a successful.
Okay, depende, next, Counselor Aga. Atora ni Ha, kapag pasabot, regani sa viewing public.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, I will try to explain it directly to the public, to the viewers. So, ang ato ang palengke QR, mura na siya uggportahan, mura na siya uggportal. Ngama connect na to ang atong e-wallet sa atong transaktion. So kanang palengke QR, importante na siya, kaya mauna siya ang gi acknowledge na QR codes sa atong national government. So kung gamit na to ang palengke QR, maabri na to ang portahan para makatransacta gamit sa atong Gcash, gamit sa atong PayMaya. Gamit siguro, maybe in the future, sa atong cryptocurrency, para makatransacta sa katong lahi nga mga establishment. So kung wala ning palengke QR, if di li siya mauang acknowledge na standard and legal, legally acknowledged by the BSP. Basig mahulog taog scam, so mahulog nga, di li na noon safe ang atong transactions. With regards to the question of Madam Vice Mayor Bebat, kung safe ba ang kuarta? Yes, safe ang kuarta, because I have been using Gcash for almost a few years.
You are using now QR code.
No, no, no. Ang QR code, no, 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 no. Ang QR code, Madam Chair, muna siya ang portal lang, nga, for example, ako'y Gcash. Pwede na ko i-send directly sa imo ang Gcash, but to make it more secure, gamit na to ang palengke QR code para di li git mawala ang atong kuarta.
Okay, so the palengke QR code, in your understanding, pwede na to gamit sa gawas, sa ciudad, sa kagayan?
Mas maayaw, muna siya ang goal sa BSP.
Are you very sure on that?
With regards to the sureness.
Okay, research on that, okay? So, okay, thank you very much, you wanted to say something? Di li, at least I'm getting idea, may may sa, I'm getting kay, this was a decision na sabton, okay?
Ah, Madam Chair. Ang isa't two ganito sa BSP, ilang gi, gi, sabagi, gi.
Ipasabot yun.
Sabot bagayo, unsa'y mga, mga uno, dos, tres, morning, mga steps nga paghimoon, ipakita, unta sila sampul. Pananitan na kay QR code, sampulta, unsa'tong baton. Kay kubananitan, karoon, bait ko, singgita, pisig isda. QR code, ang gamitong, asaman okay, iprint ang akong ang presyo. Di, asaman na bibigang presyo, sa'on ko pagprint. Type mo.
Asaman niya makita ang presyo, which is also true.
No, mo sa kani'ka, lagi nga, gusto ko nga, let us just defer this, para nga, ten kita makasabot. Para da sampulta, para da magbayad ta sa.
Yes, Mister Majority Floor Leader.
Pagshulti ka mo, unsa'on.
No, 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 na ay, parehas sa Gcash, mag-scan ka, magbayad ka sa Jelly B, naa may presyo ang imong ibutang, tumadina nila i, iplusla, di li manap pwede may tabo. Ngawala balikas, wala imong kanan taglo kay nakabutan, Madam Chair. Naana, ana siya.
Ang imo mo ko ikwan ng, ang ketulgi na na.
Naalagi, naalagi.
O sa presyo, sa, sa, type mo diya.
Yes, ma.
So, kula gi sampul unta na makasabot at tanan.
Balib PSP na, basta naas, di li.
Wala man diya, wala magibutang.
Di li mo ka pwede nga mag, kanang magsend, kung wala ka kabalo sa pinay presyo sa maubaligga produkto or serbisyo. So muna siya, naana, di li na pwede, pareho ba kung mag-scan ka, kung pa ato kay Jelly B. Ah, it's like this, it's like this, I have to be very honest, I do not, I do not say nga. Naku kita pigan sa inyo, unsa, for now, kulang-kulang. And I don't know what the rest of the councilors will be, will be basing on their understanding. Yes, Counselor Rocha Abadai.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and my colleagues and our visitors, we're getting confused now. I think, as I read, Madam Chair, and my colleagues, the city of Pandawi, the city of Samis, and our other cities. Before they have implemented this kaniyang program, kaniyang QR code, sponsored by the BSP and the LG. They have conducted service of consultation, especially that our target here are the lowly correct. Like binders, like sikat drivers, this could because they're becoming high tech now, pero they should have, no, siya, kita ganay mismo. At the mga gadget, kalisupeta, how much more for these lowly people? So, I would like to propose, Madam Chair, that those authors and co-author will do schedule for consultation sa atong mga kaiksunan para. This will be printed thoroughly, thank you very much.
Hans first, Counselor Aimi Moreno.
Digang salamat, Madam Chair, mayong hapon. Actually, in our generation, sa generation karoon, one can easily create a QR code by online. So I believe, so I believe that this is a good measure from the national government, BSP, in controlling or regulating the usage of QR code. But again, I am still, I must admit that I am still unaware of all the technicalities and details. And would like to agree with Counselor Majority Floor Leader Edgar Cabanlas for a deferment of this.
Okay, there's this motion for deferment, okay? Counselor Attorney Joey Abu, yes?
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I do not want to delve into the argument kung unsa'y pulusa QR code or anything. But likewise with the, we cannot yet move now with the deferment since the rules is still suspended. Once we assume, or resume with the session, perhaps this matter must be, or is proper, properly should be discussed in the committee level and not in the plenary.
Okay.
I believe.
So there's this motion to defer, and later, so we have to resume first?
We have to lift the suspension.
No, no, we have to, no, no, lift, there will be discussion. Okay, so our session is resume.
So move to defer, Madam Chair, and refer back to the committee for detailed discussion and explanation. Because we will be dealing with people who do not have this deep knowledge about technology and information. So, ato ng, ato na 'yung binisay ko, nagpipagayo, mga makasabot ang mga labina, mga palengke, na ato ni sila pasabton pagayo.
Okay, there's already the second, any objection? Yes. Yes, manifestation, Counselor Romeo Calizo, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I suggest that there must be a simpler.
Simpler, yes.
Presentation of what this QR code is all about. Because as I've been listening to the earlier presentation by our good presenters from the Banco Central. I don't know if I'm too old already to comprehend, Madam Chair, but I can hardly understand the presentation. So how much more with ang atong ma yanong kaiksunan? So I suggest nga, siguro, simplihan gamay ang presentation, kanan masabtan yun.
Correct, okay, thank you very much.
My recommendation, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Romeo Calizo, yes, Counselor Bernice Parsha. Manifestation.
Madam Chair, this will be referred back to the committee. Pero hangyo, sadming nga, matosad mo sa committee level, kung kami lagi hapon ang na sa committee. Convincido naman me, to, sa'on na mo pag.
Okay.
Kay kami, then again, ako lang i-tirate niya, again, Madam Chair, para di lang, again. Ang push lang yun sa BSP, ani, is to give the people a choice. Ngapwede sila digital, kaya kung ikaw di gabong kasabot gusto gabong ka cash, wala gi problema. Maulang yun na ang, morgit ang konsepto supposed to be, ani, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor Rens, yes, Counselor Michael, seno.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, good afternoon to you. Of course, good afternoon to my fellow colleagues of the 28th City Council, President of Media, and of course, students up there at the back. Good afternoon.
You have visitors?
Yes, later on, you will be recognized, Madam Presiding Officer. First of all, I'm very supportive with this proposal, in fact, matunpa sa bisulti ni Counselor Aimi. Ngamo do ng generation, ato ng generation.
Inyo na ang generation. Di li amo.
Ato, ato ng generation, Madam Presiding Officer. So, let's adapt do sa, isgutanan sa digitalization. Nawang ako lang pointa ni Madam Presiding Officer. Tanawon unta dito sa committee level, kung ordinan sa bagyo't or resolution ang atong ipasa. Kaysa kom pagsabot, kung ordinan sa, we are something na imandate na to sila or gi require.
Isan lo.
Oo, na, do bi, uka to imong silpon rin taon nga 3310. Na, sa'on man na na to. Or do we need a resolution lang, iaddress na to sa public nga, kinanglan mag-adaptan ni QRPH. Kaya akong nasabtan, Madam Presiding Officer, sa explanation, uga sa kanan ka kay tabo karoon, okay, gamit magyapuntang online transaktion. Kini QRPH, mura reni siya, kung selaktod o binisaya ang pagkasulti, mura reni siya ID.
ID.
Wala man isay, wala man isay load. Oo, di li ka makaload, Madam Presiding Officer, mura reni siya, ang naitabuan eh. It's for example, gikan sa isa ka financial institution, instead nga magsend ka dito ukuarta, i-type ni mo imong account number o imong pangalan. Di li na kinanglan, i-type ni mo imong account number o imong pangalan, QR code na lang ang imong ipakita. Muna siya ang pagtransfer, wala kuarta denhe, nga nakabutan, basin ma, masipiat na ba, pagpasabot nga naa ikuarta. Nawang muna nga, tanawon unta dito sa committee level, kung resolution bagyo't or ordinan sa, kay mura reni gimanato na to tanan lugar katauhan dan isda bayan. Wala na, na, na maligya, o naa itransaktion, bisa lugar driver sikat baka dia, or motorella driver na, nagiuban ulagay diya silpon na, kinanglan yun nga naa sila silpon. Nawang muna akong pangutana, Madam Presiding Officer, hopefully, it will be addressed at a proper time sa committee. But I'm very, very supportive with this, in fact, kinanglan na yun ta nga mo adopt good sa bagong sistema para nga di li putta ma left behind. Nawang ako lang, laruhon gi dito sa committee level, sa inana ng mga punto, Madam Presiding Officer, nga di li put magabi adong atong mga katawan sa nakbayan.
That's true, kaya yun ano, lahi na takidad karoon, and this is a very, this is a technical, no? So, so there this motion to refer back to the committee, hopefully, yes, last one.
Madam Chair, laruhin ko lang, ganyan for the record, para lang nga ma matatagin na to sa atong record, maputang gidiha nga. Kaniyang naa public consultation gimo, kay ayaw pa na ko na dumduman, nagpatawag mata sa committee hearing, ika duha kanito nga gayon. Sa commitiban ni Counselor George Go King, naa ang kumba president, Go ki pasabot, dia sayang mga gingsakpan. Niuyon sila sa maubalig nga konsepto, kung madumduman, aman si Counselor George Go King. So, naa, Madam Chair, sa pangutana, ganina, ni mo kanak, nga, naa by public consultation gimo, naa, ika duha nga gimo, gidapit bali ang kumba president. Ngasi Mister Franklin Dagota.
Excuse me, what I know of public consultation is you are there facing the people, that resource person. You're inviting only one person, representing what I have in mind of real meaning public consultation. You will be physically present among these people who will be involved. Example, ang mercado, tama na dia, to the public consultation, motorella, mga drivers. No, I do not consider that a public consultation for me, yes, Counselor Michael, seno.
We have the same manifestation, Madam Presiding Officer, nga, di li lang pwede nga usap katawan niya.
Resource person nga manang kitawa.
Yeah, we should inform the public. Of course, I think the best way nga ato ang pwede pod nga mapaabotan eh, uga makasabot kaniyang atong ordinan sa, is through our media partners. Ngay, sila man eh magbroadcast, may manti, unsa dining QRPH nga gusto unta ipaabot lugar na to, nga naa sa katauhan. Kay, kung isa o duha, posible nga makasabota, ang yano na to nga katauhan, na di li na to mapaabot, basin posible ang media pwede na to mahimong bridge.
Correct.
Ngapaabot.
And, and, kamu ga pa interview, magin bus radio, promote, pada kan.
Thank you, Madam.
Da nga masabtan nila before it is being approved, nga masabtan, labina sa atong yanong mga tao sa nakbayan. Last one na to, anyway, refer to the committee, let's proceed, Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Okay, so we defer that, subject to the final disposition by the committee. So let's proceed to our, thank you very much, BSP.
Thank you very much, sir, ma'am, thank you very much.
Magahin Junior.
Majority Floor Leader, I think we have visitor who are here.
Madam Chair, we'd like to recognize.
Okay.
May I request, Madam Chair, that you recognize the visitors, we have here, the students and.
Special ordinance.
Ah, okay. Ah, okay, so they will be here to witness and to listen on our approval or disapproval of the proposed ordinance number 2023323. Providing for the comprehensive code of students' rights and welfare, kagayan new city, providing funds therefore and other purposes. So, we will tackle that later.
Okay, sige, welcome to the plenary session, our visitors, the students are here.
So we, so we proceed to item two.
Yes, proceed.
Madam Chair, proposed resolution number 2023, that's 521 constituting the city council as a committee of the whole. To deliberate on the kagayan new city executive budget, general fund and special accounts, economic enterprises, utilities for CY 2024. And for this purpose, suspending all committee hearings, meetings for the duration thereof, except in cases involving measures certified as urgent. And without prejudice to the submission of documents to committee members for perusal.
Any second.
May I request that Counselor Ian Lam Lim, recognize.
Counselor Ian Lam Lim. Counselor Ian Lam Lim, you are recognized.
Madam Chair, may hapon, I move to approve Resolution Number 2023-dash-521.
Any second, objection. Point of information, yes, Counselor Attorney James Judith.
Madam Chair, gusto lang ako nga masairan, okay man ko sa mahubaling pag himo ano eh, pagdukduk na to ano eh nga, kining resolution. Ang ako lang is, ah, unsa ba ang atong approach kay, sa atong nasabutan, by department man ang atong pagtawag. So, unsa ba napabilin pa bagya pontong ang ato baling kasabutan nga by department ang atong pagka-kining tuki sa atong budget.
Yeah, sir, Counselor Ian Lam Lim, please.
All Department Managers will be invited.
Yeah, yeah, we will be. Kita, there is about the same before na, delay na one day lang, they will be inviting departments on that specific days.
We will be inviting the departments, department.
For discussion.
And subject to how long will it take for us to deliberate on one department per department, so.
Not in one setting, that is not in one setting.
Maybe not in one setting, it could be two or three or four sitting.
Yeah, we will be sending schedules, basar torts.
It depends on what will be the result on our first day of meeting, uh, hearing, Madam Chair.
Okay, okay na. Okay, so the question I was going to preside.
Uh, as, as practice, it is the chairman of the Finance Committee who will preside.
Okay, so it's Counselor Ian Lam Lim who is going to preside, kay mo man ay practice, no?
That was, that was.
That was also practice before, right? Okay, so, any more question? Counselor Bernice Parsha.
The same manifestation, I just want to hear a confirmation from Counselor Alam Lim. Ngayong at dili para la, ang last year mangod, gi usara, then, ano, at, I want, tanat this time, medyo nakakuwan naman mi gamay, nakasabot naman mi gamay nga, dapat, medyo tutukan namo per department ang mga budget, kung kinse ang ay tabangan or something, so confirm lang for the record, Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor Ian Lam Lim.
Ng per department, na dili ta the, the last time nga gi usara, nga one setting ra.
It will be discussed from members of the Finance Committee.
By department, by department heads.
No, magmeeting may ano, because it is true to me, so delete cover.
Because it's committee of the whole?
Yes.
Okay, so we will just wait, no? Yes, Counselor Attorney Joyabo, do we wrong?
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam, Madam Presiding Officer, we are going to constitute a committee as a whole, the entire City Council, to deliberate the 2024 budget. Now, as to whether we will post through on this in one setting or per department, forgive me if I'm wrong, please enlighten me on this, but I think it's the call of the committee as a whole, whether to pass it in one setting or call it per division, per department.
Okay.
Not the local, not the local finance.
Okay, so Majority Floor Leader, you have the floor?
Uh, yes, that's why, according to Counselor Ian Lam Lim, we will talk about this in our first meeting of the committee of the whole. Kay kitamay mo, ang committee of the whole will, will decide on what to be the procedure that we will adopt.
So, this will be referred back to the committee on finance, and no more, i-discuss na.
For the committee of the whole.
Okay, so, any, any, uh.
Objection.
This is pending motion, second?
Second.
Any objection?
None.
None? Gamay lang, okay, go.
Di ko kasabot, so magmeeting patta, sa ato baling season nga sa, sa kining sa council or katunang sa committee of the whole nga, para katong sa joint.
Committee as the whole muna.
Lagit, so, lai to.
Lai to, kamusa, whether kani sya tuki on bago sa kaadlaw, or bahin-bahin on per department.
May unang adyenda sa sunod na, nga panagtigo, bali sa committee of the whole.
Yes.
Ok, larunan ako, kina, among utay sanglitanan, Majority Floor Leader, nga ignorance of the law excuses the lawyer only.
Okay.
We will, but we will during the first meeting of the committee of the whole.
First meeting na, tawaguntanan.
The committee of the whole.
Yes.
Aside from adapting the procedure, we will start inviting the.
So, any objection? No objection, so, motion is hereby certified.
Move to approve, unsa can final reading?
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby certified.
Item three, proposed resolution number 2023-dash-522, returning to Barangay Council of Barangay 16, the city, its ordinance number 2-dash-2023, covering its supplemental budget number one for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 840,346 pesos, with information that its ordinance is periodic and in its entirety. Move, no, request, Counselor Abada.
Counselor Roger Abada, you recognize?
Move that the proposed solution be approved.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item four, torts.
Item number four, proposed ordinance number 2023-dash-321, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Orlando Aoi, representing the City Government of Cagayan de Oro, to enter into and sign the memorandum of undertaking with the Department of Public Works and Highways, Cagayan de Oro City First District Engineering Office, represented by its OIC District Engineer, Annali M. Mansano, covering the collaboration of the parties in the implementation of the CY 2023 Farm-to-Market Road Projects located in Barangay, Tagpangay, and Barangay, Lumbya, both the city, under the terms and conditions stipulated in the MOU, her two attached, and for this purpose, appropriating the sum of 2,700,000 pesos from the item special programs project, upgrading concreting of farm-to-market road LGU equity under the Agricultural Productivity Office in the 2023 annual budget to be made available for the city's 10%, 10,000 counterpart fund for the one concreting of Barangay, Tagpangay FMR in the amount of 1.5 million pesos, and two concreting of Barangay, Lumbya FMR in the amount of 1.2 million pesos, both the city.
Madam Chair, may I request that Counselor J. Pasqual be recognized.
Counselor J. Pasqual, you are recognized.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, move to approve the proposed resolution.
Any second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, unsa can final reading?
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number five, torts, please.
Item five, proposed ordinance number 2023-dash-322, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Orlando Aoi, representing the City Government of Cagayan de Oro, to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Health, Center for Health Development Northern Mindanao, represented by its Regional Director, Husey Al Yakona, MDMPH C23, covering the implementation of the Healthy Settings Program for fiscal year 2023 under the terms and conditions stipulated herein.
Uh, may I request that Counselor Gani be.
Counselor Lordes Gani, you recognize?
May hapon ka na atong tanan, I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023-dash-321.
Any second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, unsa can final reading?
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item six, proposed ordinance number 2023-dash-323, providing for the comprehensive code of for students' rights, welfare of Cagayan de Oro City, providing funds therefore and for other purposes. May I request Counselor Seno be recognized.
Counselor Michael Seno, you are recognized.
Good afternoon, once again, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Jocelyn Bebot Bautista Rodriguez, and of course, to the members of the 28th City Council, friends of the media, students, and of course, may I acknowledge the presence of the Regional Director of the Commission on Human Rights Regional Office 10, Attorney. Gian Ibi Abrina.
Uh, Counselor, oh, Counselor, Attorney Gian Abrina, yes.
Regional Director of the Commission on Human Rights.
Okay.
Who is very supportive of this students' rights and welfare ordinance. Duhan na ka council, 19th and 28th City Council, kumbate na mo anini, Counselor Joset Magtaas Daba, and I'm very happy that the, uh, there is this students' rights and welfare ordinance that will hopefully be passed by this council, to be considered as the book of students in the city of Cagayan de Oro. While I'm very supportive and happy, I just have a manifestation, Madam Presiding Officer, in section four of this proposed ordinance.
Page?
Okay. Before my manifestation, Madam Presiding Officer, I so move for the approval of this proposed ordinance.
Second, objection, I hear na, okay, manifestation.
Manifestation, uh, this proposed ordinance states that the, there is, there is funding provision. Uh, providing funds therefore, may I know how much is the funding requirement of this ordinance? Okay, and second, if there is such a funding requirements, do we have clearance from the local finance committee of the availability of funds? Say mangod kita, gaposan tagbalak ordinan yun, yun mga funding, yun na tagapandlaktod na ta. I think we should require the certification from the local finance committee as to availability of funds.
Is there funds there, stated? How much?
Wala. So, where would we get the funds? That's the question now. Uh, that's the, that's the sample that we passed on ordinance before for stating that the ordinance requires how many millions of pesos, and yet there is no certification from the local finance committee that that amount is there ready for that program to be implemented. And that is the requirement of the law, that ordinance, ordinance which requires funding, that's the requirement of the law, that there should be certification from the local finance committee that such funds are ready and available. But if there is no fund.
There's no fund, oh, no, no, there's amount, there's no amount. But requiring fund, yes, Counselor Joset Daba, please.
Ah, yes, the gunsalamat, Madam Chair, and thank you also, Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas. It's actually included already sa Oro Youth Development Office na budget. So, we have discussed that during the committee meetings, so, dili manisya dako na budget appropriation, because ang atong oido, the Oro Youth Code actually was approved in 2018, and actually, it institutionalized youth participation when it comes to resolutions and ordinances in the city. So, during our committee meetings, we, we have the head of the Oro Youth Development Office, it's already included in their budget for this year and next year, Madam Chair, thank you.
Yes, Majority Floor Leader.
Uh, we, we, of course, we are, we are in favor of this ordinance, but as I said, it has followed the procedure. According to 639 of the ordinance, it says, "The City Government, through the, through the Oro Youth Development Office, shall appropriate funds under the annual and supplemental budgets for the implementation of this ordinance." Madam Chair, it's not the Oro Youth, who has the authority to appropriate funds, it is the City Council. We are the, we are the holder of the purse. So, it's not the Oro Youth who will, it's, it's here, the Oro Youth Development Office shall appropriate, what authority do they have to appropriate amount? For the, for the function of this, of this, so, I mean, it should be the City Council.
Okay, so.
But, so, and there is no fixed amount here, it depends on how much the Oro Youth will appropriate. Can you imagine, they will appropriate 1 million, so, I do not know.
So, what's the pressure now? Counselor Michael, yes?
Yes, thank you, thank you so much, Madam Presiding Officer, no? Uh, when I took office, Madam Presiding Officer, the Oro Youth Code is already been standing and being implemented in the city of Cagayan de Oro, way back in 2018, which was authored by Counselor J. Rua Pasqual, kining Oro Youth Code. Since then, na nanipundo ang atong students' rights and welfare, kiniadto panninga, in fact, na may mga karabans nga ilagi pay gayon. Uh, and na nilang, Madam Presiding Officer, no? Kung nakita na ko, Madam Presiding Officer, kung, I think, ang point lang sa ato ang Majority Floor, sa akong pagsabot is that ang wording sa kining, uh, section na 39, no? That it's not the Oro Youth shall appropriate, and let's change the word based on the, what we needed, or if that's fine with the Majority Floor Leader, Madam Presiding Officer.
Uh, my suggestion is remove the funding.
Okay.
Remove the funding, providing funds therefore, we will just, we will just approve, providing for the comprehensive code for students' rights and welfare of Cagayan de Oro City, stop there.
Okay.
Providing funds therefore.
Then, are they getting the funds from the Oro?
Yes, then, they can get the funds from the.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I'm, I, I think, Madam Presiding Officer, together with my co-authors, Counselor Joset Magtaas Daba, based on the proposal of the Majority Floor Leader, uh, I, we will amend, uh, amended, amended.
Okay.
Another amendment, Madam Presiding Officer? On, uh, section four, wala ni na delete siguro sa secretary, Madam Presiding Officer. Uh, nga, ang, ang proposal ano is that we will start on senior high school up to tertiary level, kena include, ang nabutang manan eh, including primary, Madam Presiding Officer, or under section four, no, uh, par, uh, paragraph A, nakabutang magidan eh, all private and public tertiary, technical, secondary, and primary education institution. Let's remove the word, the primary education institution, Madam Presiding Officer. So, we will start for the record, we will start it on senior high school up to tertiary level.
So, senior high school?
Yes.
Not the primary?
Ah.
So, there's the amendment, majority.
So, amended, Madam Chair, duly seconded.
Okay, second, oh, no, okay, manifestation, Counselor Joset Daba.
Uh, in addition, Madam Chair, also in Article 2, definition of terms, section 5, letter B, school refers to an institution for learning in all levels of education. So, we exclude also primary education institutions.
What, section 5, letter?
D.
D.
Letter B, letter B.
B.
Okay.
Boy.
Letter B.
So, remove the.
Because it says for learning, refers to an institution for learning in all levels of education, so not all levels, because we excluded primary education institutions. And in addition, Madam Chair, I would like to acknowledge, I would like also to acknowledge this afternoon, Xavier University Central Student Government Department of External Affairs and Networks and Straw Commission headed by Adam Guanzon, CSG President.
Yes, Adam Guanzon, yes, welcome.
And then we.
Xavier University.
Yes, we also have organizasyon sa mga nakahiusang estudyante sa Cagayan de Oro, One CDO.
One CDO, welcome.
And then asociasyon sa mga nakahiusang estudyante para sa progresibo og madasigon na ate neyo, Dasi.
Dasi, you're welcome, here. DASI, you're welcome here.
XU Senior High Student Government.
XU Senior High, you're welcome here.
And then we have Division of Federation of Supreme Student Governments, Department of Education.
Department of Education, Supreme Student.
Yes, SSG. And then Unyon, Unyon na mga estudyante sa Mindanao, Unyon Mindanao headed by Mr. Ivan Lagonero, the president.
Mr. Ivan Lagonero, yes, good afternoon.
And then Balaood Mindanao.
Balaood Mindanao, good afternoon.
Liam. And then, of course, it was already mentioned a while ago, our Commission on Human Rights Region Ten headed by Regional Director Attorney Abrina.
Yes, Attorney.
And then the Oro Youth Development Council in School Youth Sector headed by Kyle Chester Cotacca.
Mr. Kyle Chester, good afternoon.
That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, where are we now? So, there's amendment, okay?
There's a pending amendment.
Okay, pending amendment, that take note animo, Sir Torres. Okay, there's pending amendment, and the second? Second?
Second.
Okay, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried, congratulations.
Move to approve on second final reading.
Second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Item seven, proposed ordinance. On item seven, Madam Chair, proposed ordinance number twenty-two-three, three-two-four, creating the Engineering and Infrastructure Management Board, providing for its composition and functions and for other purposes. Before the move, Counselor Seno is to be recognized.
Counselor Michael Seno, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, once again, Madam Presiding Officer. Hopefully, this ordinance would address all the issues on infrastructure projects in the city government of, in the, in the city of Cagayan de Oro. Due to the overlapping of communication, Madam Presiding Officer, hopefully, this would answer na magkoordinate sila sa tanan mga opisina para nga wala na dalan naipusti na stunga or wala na tulay na nagbabag pagyapon ang linyas tubig. Hopefully, this would answer, Madam Presiding Officer. I so move for the approval of the proposed ordinance number two-zero-two-three dash three-two-four.
And the second?
Madam Chair, manifestation.
Okay, there's manifestation, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you have the floor? Na, na? Ah. Okay, Majority Floor Leader?
Madam Chair, may I request that this be referred back to the ELR, to the Committee on Laws and Rules, for a proper discussion and meeting. Especially that it creates a very powerful board. We want to study this further because, I mean, this was referred to us. We just approve it.
Okay, so there's.
Atosening review, because I have not read properly and digest properly the provisions of this, of this ordinance. As Chairman of the Committee on Laws and Rules, I beg that this will be referred back to the committee for further study. I want to hear the recommendation of the official city mayor.
Okay.
Because here, there is none. And we were also, you know, there are other agencies of the government that we should, we should be seeking advice and information. Okay, creating the Engineering and Infrastructure Management Board. So, is there no overlapping of functions and powers with the official city mayor in the oversight power of the city government? Kaya kita magus, sa City Council, na namagutay oversight function. So, who may create patag Engineering Management Board? So, therefore, ang tanan project mahagi ni. This might be another venue of gilik maayong mga hitabok. So, let us refer this back to the Committee on Laws and Rules for legality and for further studies, the substantial value of this legislation. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Counselor Michael Seno, you have the floor?
Thank you so much, Madam Presiding Officer. As I have been fully respected by the Majority Floor Leader, I have yielded that this be referred to the Committee on Laws and Rules. Akulang hangyo, Madam Presiding Officer, before I step down on November thirty, ato ng ma, matuki unta, Madam Presiding Officer, as soon as possible. Considering that we have suspended all the committee deliberation based on the prior approval of this council that we have created a committee of the whole. Hopefully, before November thirty, it will be deliberated on the plenary, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, thank you.
That's my pleading only to the Majority Floor Leader as the Chairman of the Committee on Laws and Rules.
Posthumous.
Hahaha.
He will, he will, he will always be remembered.
Oh. Ozlang sign di ay.
He will be, but that, that's why we cannot just rush this up.
Okay. Anyway, you're still the author.
I don't think so, that was also the idea of Counselor Seno. So, ato kasi ang dumun permin. His name will be there always.
Yes, of course, of course.
Is that on record?
Yeah, it's already there. Okay.
So, motion to differ, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion to differ. Refer back to the committee. And the second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Okay. Number, item eight, Turks. Item number eight, proposed ordinance number twenty-two-three dash three-two-five, approving the preliminary subdivision development plan, PSDP of the Old Child District, under township development project located in barangay Berulang, the city, with an area of four hundred forty thousand six hundred sixty square meters, containing one hundred seventy-five lots under PD nine-five-seven, as applied for by the Jando Ventures Corporation, represented by Mr. George Norman Patayon, project development manager of Cebu, Davao, and Estates, subject to the compliance of the conditions imposed by the City Engineering Office, City Housing and Urban Development Department, and the City Housing Board.
Move to approve this ordinance, Madam Chair?
Second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
For inclusion, Madam Chair? Items nine to thirteen, move for each inclusion, Madam Chair.
Second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item nine, gini, Turks.
Item number nine is proposed ordinance number twenty-two-three dash three-two-six, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Orlando Eui, representing the City Government of Cagayan de Oro, to borrow and contract alone with the Land Bank of the Philippines in a total amount of two-point-seven billion pesos for the acquisition of land with a total area of two-hundred-twenty-nine thousand forty-three square meters, covered by TCT number one-three-seven dash two-zero-one four-zero-zero one-two-seven, located in barangay Carmen, Cagayan de Oro City, under the name of Susan Sid Española, Joseph Im Sid, and Christine Sid Pan, and for the construction of the new city hall complex and land development, itemized as follows. Purpose of the loans, Cagayan de Oro Government Center and Eco Tourism Site, A, land acquisition in the amount of one billion five hundred thirty million pesos. Land development, two hundred fifty million pesos. Construction, C, construction of new city hall building complex, nine hundred twenty million pesos in a total amount of two-point-seven billion pesos.
Madam Chair, may I request that Counselor Yan Lam Lim be recognized? And this, this, this resolution, this ordinance is being certified urgent by our city mayor.
Counselor Yan Lam Lim, you are recognized?
Well, Madam Chair, I move to approve proposed ordinance number two-zero-two-three dash three-two-six.
And the second? Objection? Counselor Attorney Joey Abu?
Good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer, to my colleagues as well. I have the same grounds with that of katung ako ng previous, nga naihistoria sa previous sessions and committee hearings. And additional grounds, nga nong maginterpose ko sa kong objection. Number one, I understand that this is certified urgent by the local chief executive. But, my question is, ang sa may basihan na to, na is certified urgent is ya, nga measure, nga, ikaw sa butang nga nong ginadali, ginisya, og push, og pasar. And the DLG, DLG Opinion number twenty-seven, series of two thousand nineteen, nag-ingon, kung unse mga butang or measures na pwede is certify urgent sa local chief executive. And it is only limited to three. One, is to respond quickly to an exigency of public service. Second, of public emergency. And third, of calamity. Now, ang pangutana, sunod, ang pagpangutang banato sa kantidad nga two-point-seven billion sa pagpalit aning ayuta, og pagtukod aning mga building. Is it based on exigency of public service, emergency, or calamity? I don't think so. Di liko umuyan pod. And also, wouldn't it be prudent on our part to loan such huge amount? Na considering the, the agenda of the good mayor is rise CDO, purposely to rise back sa effects brought about by the pandemic. Now, why do we, ang akong punto mungod is, gasubay baka niyapun is ya sa agenda sa tunghalang dun mayor, where in fact, na instead unta, na mo focus ta og ipadakot na to ang ato ang panudlanan, mangutang naman hinuunta. Diba? And besides, I understand that this is for the transfer of the city hall, the seat of government of Cagayan de Oro. But functional pa mani ang ato ang city hall ngaron, existing. Gani, we are being cited and awarded with various recognitions. Gani, recently, twenty-twenty-two, we are awarded as top seven, highly, most competitive, highly urbanized city in the entire Philippines. Here, the local government functioning in the existing site of this city hall. So, meaning to say functional gehapunta even if napatadari. So, I do not see the urgency, ug nga nong dali on pod na to ni. Second point, Madam Presiding Officer, is previously, way back September twenty-five this year, was the first time that this measure was attempted to be passed before this plenary. But obviously, the documents presented during that time, kay kulang. That is why gidifer is ya. Now, three days after, September twenty-eight, naconvin ang committees, gi-invite ang members of the local finance committee, and most of us were present during that time. When I asked the city engineer, if na ano ba'y basihan para sa construction sa building, costing, documents to support the construction of the building, ang gitubak ato was that it was just merely a concept. I also asked the city assessor, na, ah, I asked the city assessor as well, kung naabay counteroffer na gihimo ang local government unit sa pagpalit sa maong luna. Ang tubak, and I can vividly remember the answer of the city assessor, which he said, nga wala na'y counteroffer, og dili, na kailangan magcounteroffer, kay barato na kaayaw ang pagpalit sa maong luna na six thousand five hundred per square meters, besan pa man, og bakilid, og buntod ya. Obviously, the committee passed the said resolution endorsing such matter, the two-point-seven billion na loan there is a plenary. That is why we have it here right now. Now, in today's item, makita na po na to nga naibagong mga attachment na, nabutang sa atong agenda. Una is the attachment as to the counteroffer dated October twenty-two. Second is the attachment of the costing of the building. Now, akong pangutan na pod, Madam Presiding Officer, is that nga nong karoon pa mani sila naghimo counteroffer after atong first attempt unta, na is, ipasar di siya nga measure sa plenary. And even after the committee endorsed this measure for approval before the plenary, was this just an afterthought? nga nong wala mani siya gi-submit daan prior sa committee level para unta na diskasan, na pangutan na, na pakita, og nasabtan sa members of council. Secondly, ayapasad gi-submit ang, sa city engineers, ang ilahan costing sa pagtukod sa bagong building sa bagong city hall, and not during the committee hearing, karun lang. Ang sa ato pag, personally, Madam Presiding Officer, ang sa ato pag sabot aning data na giattach na, personally, I am not an engineer, di liko kasabot. And this should have been explained by the city engineer, not kay dire, ipapasa na lang dirito sa plenary, but in the committee level. But the city engineer failed to do so and even present the document in the committee level. Lastly, Madam Presiding Officer, Section eleven, Paragraph B and C of the Local Government Code, nagmando og nag-ingon na kunman gani ang local government unit ibalhin nila ang ilang seat of power, like sa atua ang city hall, to any other location, ayha, kini siya mabuhat, and this is mandated by law. There should have been first a public hearing and a resolution passed by the City Council with a vote of two-thirds granting and consenting the transfer of the seat of government. Pangutan na, was there a public hearing conducted already? There is none. Kada, was there a resolution submitted by this august body consenting or agreeing as to the transfer of the seat of power to a different location? There is none. Ang ako mungod ani, Madam Presiding Officer, ang kailangan pemengunatong ta ni pangutan on, we should conduct a public hearing first before we, kung ano hin tabuk mangod, we will grant, we will contract alone before we conduct public hearing? What if?
No, please proceed.
We?
Proceed.
Yes, we should have conducted, conducted a public hearing on this matter before siya mapasar. Oh, mangutang tadaan, niya, ayapata magliyok aning mga butang, which is not compliant sa Belaud.
Okay, you're done?
And to finish, Madam Presiding Officer, gani, namanggari kay sixty hectares sa Lumbia, nga ato ipadibelot, og pribado nga company, ni dilalang ato gamitun. And sa pagtabos, Madam Presiding Officer, nae mga adagan kayo pangutan na ani, kalabot aning item, which could possibly be raised later on. And mamahimo na tuning tulubagun, prole sa korte, buzmang, or sandigan bayan. And si bako, kung namanggari pangutan na ani, I do not want to be involved with that. That's why I am interposing my injection and move for the division of the house.
Okay, thank you. You want to comment? You want to make a comment? Counselor Roger, yes?
My dear colleagues, and Madam Presiding Officer, I think the speaker and the rest, most of us, we already admitted and we, they manifested that they have no, not against that the transfer of the city hall. I think that is on record. Nobody objected during the passage of this, this agenda, Madam Chair. And all of the statement, most of the statement uttered by the speaker, would have taken up from the committee, from the committee and during our session. So, I think there's nothing more to question about this proposed order, Madam Chair. So, there was, I manifested for our objection, and I move for the division of the house, Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor Attorney Joey Abu, you have the floor?
Just to rejoin there, Madam Presiding Officer. I think, I would agree that perhaps in principle, we do not have any objection. But on record, with the verification. But on record, with the verification with the secretary, do we have a resolution wherein the entire body, the August body, pass a resolution interposing no objection to the transfer? Do we have? That's the answer, Madam President.
Counselor Roger Badai, yes. Counselor Edgar Cabanlas. After, after Counselor Badai.
Real to the majority.
Okay, Counselor Majority Leader, Counselor Edgar Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Ah, ang ako lang ya, ingon si Counselor Joey, ah, this is an urgent, certified urgent by the mayor, nga nong man nga pasun man. Precisely, we disregarded the urgency of this measure by conducting the series of deliberation. Sugod kini September pa, karun, usain na karun, magdobembrina ta. And we had a hearing and a meeting on this in plenary for, I think, three times. So, ah, despite the, the request for urgency from the city, from the city mayor's office, we did not do that. Now, and secondly, Madam Chair, there is emotion from Counselor Joey himself to divide the house and consider his manifestations and objection. So I move for the division of the house.
So? Question? One more question? Objection? Question? Okay, question. Go, proceed. Counselor Attorney James?
Kano lang, kaning, ang ako bahay lang sa legality, so wala ko'y supak sa kinatibukan, sa konsepto, sa naata, basis sa pinasubay sa section twelve, bali sa atong Local Government Code. Ang ako lang, simply, di baka kita gusto na ko ang matubag ni isip ko sa Abogado Yapon, ang atong Majority Floor Leader. Kay sa akong nasabtan, sa resolution, kaniya na atong resolution fourteen seven one seven dash two thousand twenty-three, ang atong nabutang dito na uyunan, mauman ang two point five billion. Ang ako lang is, karun kay two point seven. Kana lang, naalam ko'y gusto klarohan nga na ay pag-usap kay two point five manto sa resolution number fourteen seven one seven dash two thousand twenty-three. Two point five manto, Majority Floor Leader, karun kay two point seven. Kung ako masayop, sa una, kung gusto, una ngang pangutana. Ikadua is, wala pod ko nakita sa atong attachments, ang kita wag na to nga kaning ang kontrata. Ngamoy, at is makita pod na to, para sa kalamdagan, og informasyon sa atong mga kauban pod dini sa concejo. Kay, at usual man, sa ako nakita nga procedure, basa iluay Yapon ko, kung ako nasayod pa sa procedure. Pero kasagara, ibutang manato ang attachments. Maulang ang akong pangutana.
Wala attachments?
Wala pa, wala pa.
Okay, na lang.
Wala pa ilun kontrak.
Wala na ako.
Ah, wala pa ilun kontrak, i-apply man tag loan. So, wala pa ilun kontrak niya ikadua nga nong two, two point seven kay, ato menanggi reduce kay ah, katung sa land development, ato magitang tang, karun ibalik na to. Ah, ibalik, ang original mungod na request sa local finance committee was two point seven. And then atong, we, on our own, we, I think we reduce that to two point five. Pero karun, naginsist gaya ang city local finance committee nga ibalik tigis at two point seven para nga include na to ang land development. Wala menggunakan niya, itong approve, I do not know why nga, di sugod mo konta. So that's the point. So ang kontrata, yes, the contract will be, yet will be coming. And in fact, I think, I'm just speaking from experience, Madam Chair, this is not the final document that the, the, the city council will pass. In fact, there will be another agreement as to the security of this loan. How will the city government secure this loan? That will come later, before the finalization of the loan agreement. Kani, initial ani.
So no contract yet? Yes.
Majority Floor Leader, Madam Chair, um sa ano nga panahon kay dile, pumagka ni penalin baling nga proseso nga dokumento nga, ato baling ah, pagatanaw or probahan. Sa ano nga panahon, ako lang tataon, but mapasabot nga pwede na to mouting kay mabasa ang mga provision sa maong kontrata nga pagapirmahan sa atong halangdung mayor. So na ah, so dile ingon nga pag approve na to ani, wala na naintadin na to makita ang kontrata.
The, the, in fact, the, the, the salient points of the contract are already here. Attached is the, the proposal of land bank, mga mukha na ang ato mga kondisyonis. But then ah, kani mungod ang loan, sani agis, experience na to sa mga loans, na to sa mga previous mails before. Na'y mga securities, dani Madam Chair, na'y mga, na'y mga collaterals atas to the documents, naapani sila, di patanad, naapanini, na patay mag-aver, kay di mini pwede clean loan.
Okay.
Na pag ini kita wag nila, kwan kining, ah, era intercept, I do not know if this will be applied later. Reva, na ay era intercept, but, and then, ah, when we borrowed money during the time of Mayor Imano, ah, we, we, we use as collateral properties of the city. And in fact, also during the time of Mayor Moreno. So, but we are still waiting, kay ang, ang land bank mandani may magbuot, conceilang gusto nga collateral. I hope nga, kanang kita wag nila og era intercept, dile naman na era karun. National Revenue Alertment naman na.
NTA.
Ah, in, ah, NA, NV, NRA?
NTA, National Tax Alertment.
National Revenue Alertment. There might be, kay unsibot pasabutan na, nga kunma, ma-failure kita pagbayad, then the bank can intercept our, our share in the national. But that will be.
Come later.
That will come later. So dile, tama siguro na.
Ah, isa palang na kabutang, Madam Chair, kung tugutan. Naalam ko'y, itanaw lang mungod sa akong pag ah, duki-duki, o pagtanaw sa mga panit bali attachments sa mga agenda, kay ato, paghimomang og bagong government center, basipod sa section twelve sa Local Government Code, akong gihimay-himay dini, nakita na ko nga, kita'y na noon nga mo ay magapprove. Wala na nontay bahin sa maobaning gambalay. Kay tanawa dini ang, ang item, ang fourth floor, ang page, ang panit sa dosintos kinsy, o panit dosintos disisays. Akong kita na, wala may atong opisina, nagdaong-daong narabat, nagdaong narabat ko nga, ako nanggi-imagine, um sa kadako ang akong opisina pohon, niya na atay committee nga, nga conference room. Pero kita na ala ko, wala man, kinaaraman dili, Office of the City Mayor.
Can you give us the page, please?
Page, two one five, two one five, two one six. Naniguro wala ko, mauna kung pangutana, wala man naging nilabot. Wala, naalam may plano, so nautana lang kung ano wala, tanakaputang.
Na, na.
Dapat i-appel ni mo talaga, gaston malangali ta ginanakadako, mangutang ta ginanakadako, so ano wala man nilabot.
Ako lae ignon si, ako lae ignon si mayor nga, tagangka opisina abay mo. Bitaw, Madam Chair, liberty aside, naanay atong building sa legislative, na itay building, dollar po siya, opisina sa executive department.
So wala na appeal dire.
In fact, we will have a very beautiful building.
Wala na appeal dini sa ato.
Wala lang malaki di, pero naakan na diya. Delete, delete na, usar na na siya talon, appeal na na diya, appeal na. Wala na, na Madam Chair, in fact, we, the mayor told us that, ah, di na na to konisutin dini, kung siya ka guapo.
Ah, okay. Guapo yet? Guapo, okay. Counselor Attorney Joey Abu?
Ah, thank you again, Madam Presiding Officer. That is precisely why my point, Madam Presiding Officer. The city engineer just submitted last Friday, there, this ah, computation of costing of the building. And ah, like I, what I mentioned a while ago, that this should have been, this can be answered by the city engineer and not us.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, naamanggyod ang atong legislative building, pero ang atong, ang atong local finance committee, remember nga, na'y one billion na giattach si, si Zubiri, that will be used for the legislative building. This is now the, ah, the, ah, the information given to us by the local finance committee. Di manato malaki ng one billion sa, ni, 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 sinatos Zubiri, but that will be the one to be used as, dito na to i-constr, dito na to.
Okay.
Pasabot ba, Majority Floor Leader nga, katung counterpart ni Senator Mig Zubiri para to sa legislative building? Ang ating atong punto para, kapalay gyod nga nine hundred fifty million, halusamag billion, para lang to sa kinatibukan nga government complex?
Yes, yes, yes.
So wala pa na appeal sa katung kita wag nga government.
Ayon na, di na tula keep kay, ang, pag once mo pasar kita, I think Senator Zubiri only needs our approval of this. So that this will become the basis for his funding request in this inning.
Wala kay, pero para ang iagid mismo nga punto na igahin para sa legislative building, dile sa kinatibukan nga.
This is the information given to us.
Sa atong pagkuha og loan sa land bank.
So once the, ah, once the, ah, the funding come from Senator Zubiri will, will push through, then we will appropriate again that amount.
Ah, okay.
We will appropriate, we will pass an appropriation.
So if this will be used? Ah, okay. So that is sorry, eh, two point seven will be, ah, will be the loan amount? If kunna'y mga mabot na funding?
Additional kana nga funding, dakong manatong terbaon. Because the two point seven, the bulk of the amount is for the payment of the land. Gamera manang atong, dakong matunggas sa si building.
Okay, yes?
Kinaani lang, Madam Chair. So, two point seven billion plus one billion counterpart ni Senator Mig Zubiri. So sa kinatibukan, three point seven, pero ang loan na to, two point seven. Ang one billion, pre, frito, kay gikan matto ni Senator Mig Zubiri? Adili, bilid siya ma, consider na to baga kwan ba? Delete na to siya ma-appel sa ato balik audit.
Ayon, delete na tula keep kay.
Di siya tula keep sa atong kilo.
Wala ilabot sa atong kilo. And in fact, I do not know how much will be the, the expenditure for the building of the legislative building. Ako nadunggan primero is five hundred million, it will be coming from Senator Zubiri. But now, I heard again that it's.
One billion.
One billion. So let us hope that it will be one billion.
So, it's feasible yet nga naagit nga, one billion, karun ko ka dungo, ka na'y Senator.
Bawal, ito'y magampok ka.
Ah, okay, na ako na, na lang ko kay, sa tibok Pilipinas, kita.
So naggy ka opisina dong.
Na ako lang, sa tibok Pilipinas, lugar kita lagi ta nga pabor ni Senator Mig Zubiri nga naage, isa ka billiones nga kantidad para, isa ka billion nga kantidad para sa maong pagtukod sa legislative.
I do not know if you hear the, when Senator, the former president of the loan, Senator.
Avaglin Drilon.
When he was the president of this inning, he funded, I think, the Iloilo Airport worth thirty billion.
So, possible, ay kabla ka. So, at least na lang dati ko sa, ah, salamat, Majority Floor Leader.
Okay, thank you very much, yes. You're raising your hand. Counselor Bernie, Sparsya?
Ah, Mr. Chair, naunan na po go, nganong preyamatag na gusto tag lahi nga opisina. I was also reviewing, ah, Mr. Chair, nga ako nakita nga, um sa may naani nga mga department nga, sila ramay naasa, sige na ko gi-zoom-zoom, maginakumpuan, wama gi-legislative building. Well, ganina naaddress naman. Well, ako nalang i-manifest, since ako maputang committee chair mungod sa redaction, tapo sa nga nong mo support ako nga, malugluagan ang city hall na to, kay ang atong mga komulit, adri. Pati ho, ta sa atong mga ambulans, sa atong mga kontanan, pero nga nong wala may CDRM, dili. Separate building, Yapon na siya, mo ralay akong gusto i, kwan, Mrs. Madam Chair, kay siyempre, bugasto naman lang ta, gusto naman lang ta, og mas improve, og mas dakok nga mga building mo siya akong giunahuna nga unta.
Adri, CDRM.
Ah, so na na day, separate building. Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Chair. Moray akong gi-paklaro.
Okay, thank you very much. Last na gina, itingoba.
Counselor Sparsya nga, ang kulang, ni mo nga, nabatayan ang CDRM D, naapekulang, magulay City Health Office.
Can this be ano?
Kaya kulag, complete.
Nagina, of course, nagina, nagina. We will, ah, wala pa mani ma-final, di pa mani final kay.
So they have to present another one?
Yes, detailed engineering plan. So there is a motion from Counselor Joey, we will consider this manifestation and we respect that as an objection. So my request, Madam Chair, that we divide the house.
Okay, there is this motion to divide the house. Those who will, ah, will say yes, may raise their right hand for this approving this resolution. Anato? Resolution number twenty.
Ordinance.
Orderance, sorry. Number twenty twenty-three dash three to six. Those who will, ah, will say yes, approving, please raise your right hand. Please count. Okay, twelve. Those who are not in favor, please raise your right hand. Left hand. Four, one abstent?
One abstention, one abstention from Counselor Aimie Moreno.
One abstention, okay. Twelve, yes? Four against, one abstention, okay. So, ah, motion, our ordinance, number twenty twenty-three dash three to six is now carried.
A move to approve on second and final reading?
Ah, second?
The same, the same number of votes?
Second? Okay, objection. Same number of votes? Yeah, eleven and four.
Twelve, four, one.
Then one abstain, okay? So, ah, this, ah, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash three to six is carried. Yes, manifestation, Counselor Aimie Moreno?
Madam Chair, dagang salamat. May I just explain my vote, Madam Chair? So, wow, I, I can vividly remember when Majority Floor Leader expressed his desire to, to, na makahimuntay og bagong nga city hall, and I was excited and delighted to have heard that. I am in support of the plans of our local chief executive, Mayor Rolando Clarex Uy Oban, sa atong mga kauban dili sa city council. However, I had decided to abstain due to a certain issue that I wish, that can be addressed in the near future. Kana lang, dagang salamat, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Aimie Moreno. Let's proceed, Majority Floor Leader?
Item, ah, ten, Dirk. Item number ten, ten is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash five to four, commending Professor Cipriano Di Guzman Junior of the Liceo de Kagan University Conservatory of Music, Theatre, and Dance for being the first Filipino featured in full Italian opera in Campo Baso, Italy. Subject to styling, proponent, Counselor Suset Gi Magtaas Daba.
Madam Chair, may I request that Counselor Suset Magtaas Daba be recognized?
Counselor Suset Daba, you recognize?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and Majority Floor Leader. Attorney Ed Cabanlas, what a dog Italy, Madam Chair, no. Ding aside, ah, move to approve, kanasada yon. Proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash five to four. For the proponent, please include all members para.
Okay, all members. And a second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second, final reading?
Second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number eleven, Dirk. Item eleven is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash five to five, commending and congratulating Mr. Horst Hansbacher, Associate Dean of the Liceo de Kagan Conservatory of Music, Theatre, and Dance for winning second place during the twenty twenty-two World Vision Composer's Contest. Proponent, Counselor Suset Gi Magtaas Daba.
And members?
May I request Counselor Daba be recognized?
Counselor Suset Daba, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash five to five. All members, kay hapun, and all members on proponenting.
And a second?
Second.
Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second, final reading, Madam Chair?
Second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item twelve, Dirk. Item number twelve is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash five to six, suspending the regular sessions of the twenty-eight city councils on November pang lungsod on October, October thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, and on November six, twenty twenty-three, in view of the holding of barangay and sangunyang kabataan elections, and in deference to the observance of the All Souls Day and All Saints Day, without prejudice to the holding of special sessions as provided for in the internal rules of procedure of this body. Proponents, all members.
Kasi move check back, or emong session dere?
Move to approve.
Ah, may gase no? Anyway, anyway, second?
Second.
Oh, kayo hoy. Yes, ah, Counselor Romeo Caliso, you have the floor? Ganahan, gede mo magsession ah?
Thank you very much, ah, Madam Chair. This is not an objection, but, ah, rather acting on the request of our kokpo, the Kagandero City Police Office. Because we don't have any session, ah, on the next two Mondays anymore. Ah, considering that, ah, they are now, ah, being deployed for election duties. And after the election, we'll celebrate, ah, Kalagkalag or the All Saints Day and All Souls Day. And, ah, our kokpo is requesting, and, ah, we already had a committing to this effect. Um, revising the visiting hours of our, ah, private cemeteries. And the, even, ah, our public cemetery in Bolunsuri. From, ah, from the originally, ah, overnight visit to 6, in 6 o'clock in the morning to 10 o'clock in the evening. Ah, since we don't have any time for legislation anymore. At the proper time, Madam Chair, can we, ah, um, move for the approval of resolution? Requesting the mayor for the issuance of an executive order.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Majority floor?
Another matter should take that up.
Okay, okay. So, ah, any second?
Second.
Second, katung gusto mo duty, move check? Name gusto mo padayan o session?
Jealous, aduh, taga dinguranan dini, uglamisa.
Okay, any objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second, final reading?
Second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item 13, the favorite subject of Counselor Bernie and Counselor Abaday.
Even a favorite Counselor Bernie, it's a can Counselor Ojirana.
Ah, approving, ordinance number 2023 327, approving the application of Northern Mindanao Game Fowl Breeders Association. Region 10 Inc., represented by Mr. Victor Cabeltes. For a permit to conduct a one-day, two-wins cockfight. On November 2, 2023, and a three-day, three-stag derby on December 2022, 2023. At Indahag Square Garden, City Lumboi, Barangay Indahag, this city. May I request Counselor Roger Abaday?
Yes, Counselor Roger Abaday, you have the floor?
Thank you very much, ah, Madam Presiding Officer, Majority floor. As certified by the city legal officer. That the application is in compliance with Tagamdinglo PD 449. And our city ordinance, particularly Section 79. At 739, I move to approve this is the resolution.
Move second. Second, second. Objection?
Is there an affair sa ano, Indahag?
Wala ba'y legal complication, ani, Madam Chair nga. Giusan na napto, ang pati ang Pasko na, appeal na karoon, diba dapat lahi po na siya nga ordinance sa?
November 2 is kalagkalag. Ang December 2022, unse okasyon.
Poga di giusan. Diba pwede raha, we cross the bridge when we get there, dili sa, sa karoon, kani sa ang atong approvalhan? Giusan kung na'to hitting 2 birds.
The blood of the house.
Nangutana lang ko, kaya unsa ba'y legal, legality, ani. Kaya hitting 2 birds with 1 stone, sumiting isa ka buto dua ang ego. Okera ba siya?
Ah, okera hoy.
Ah, wala man nangutana, kani ko nangutana, kung okera ba naki, layo pa manggud siya.
Unless it is illegal to conduct, ah, cockfight on 22, 22, ah, we can approve that now.
Pwede na talugan nga magcockfighting kaya Pasko.
Oo, si San Pedro mito.
Nai, pero advance, I mean, now, diba dili siya haom sa unsa nga okasyon sa pagka karoon? Maulang ako.
Sa pagka karoon, dilipas siya haom sa December kaya Pasko.
Kaya parang man ang katuyuan sa Pasko man, so kani karoon kaya nga tung, tuyo kaya tungod man kaya ah, na may one-day-two-wins cockfight, sa morag, amboton sa alayanan nun sa okasyon. Pero ako kaila ipod nga okasyon na sa Pasko, wama ko ingon nga nagsupang nga ako lang is, ngano gidirito na'to nga karoon na lugar, diba lahi mapod na siya nga.
Counselor Roger Abaday?
Nangutana lang ko, legality, wala ko ingon nga nagsupang ako, wala ba lisancer? Diba normally, sa kanak man nga okasyon ang atong katugutan, dilipat ay ingon gabantidaan?
Ah, cited by the city legal officer, Section 70, ah, 739, Derby in the city ordinance. I read this line, please, ah.
Yaman oh.
Ah, it said that.
City legal.
Ah, city legal officer, this is our ordinance. Ah, Derby shall be allowed once a month and for a duration not exceeding 2 days in its duly licensed cockpit. With internal interval of at least 6 days. One additional Derby for the duration not extending 2 days may be allowed on the occasion of, ah, the city of barangay vista. The cockpit is located, where the cockpit is located, and also during Christmas season. That's the basis of.
Ah, so, Madam Chair, and, and another one. Section, ah, 739, according to the applica, the filing of application for Derby. With the Sanggunan Panglungsud shall be made at least 30 days prior to the holding of that election.
30 days prior?
At least.
So meaning that is in advance. So is that November 7, 30 days prior?
Oo, sa Derby, ano eh, Madam Chair?
Sa Derby?
Sa Derby, sa ordinary cockfights, wala may gibutang.
Ah, 30 days, pero 30 days said before sa December 22. So this is, this is special nga cock, ah, Derby.
Okay ra kayo.
Okay, that is the answer, Counselor Attorney James, did you get it?
Ay, nagro.
It should be 30 days before. Ang approval. The special Derby should be 30 days before ang approval.
Wala na may shake, kwan problema, wala ni Chair, ganahan na ni Chair.
Pain tuning lang, pain tuning lang, andilila mabala kasi, Constable Roger Abaday, Madam Chair. Ako lang is, wala ilali sa katung November 2 na tugutan na'to. Ang ako is, layo pa man ang Pasko sa December 22.
Precisely, that's 30 days before.
30 days before. So kung 2 months, mas mayo, 3 months, mas mayo.
Mas mayo, kaya kung ayahan ni mo, delete mo 30 days, delete na siya ma-hom sa balaw.
Wala gi, poga ni, ang ako is, lahi siya nga okasyon nga tugutan na'to, dili sa pagsupag, pero dili siya dapat makarga sa kani ordinance sa kaila. Manisang okasyon, muna ako bu't pasabot, ang technicalidad ba?
Ang nagapply, sir manggud, Madam Chair, usaran.
O, ang ako is, Jermaine basa sa maong ordinance, kaila man ang okasyon.
Kaya kaya this, Pasko man, meaning sa.
Wala ma'ko supag, Madam Chair.
Christmas celebration, pwede raha gapon magabi, kasi it is a celebration of Christmas, so that is allowed by law.
Okay nga ako manggud, ako is a legality is, eh, wala ko'y issue sa katung sa 30 days before, ang ako is, ah, sa lahi nga ordinance sa nga ekober, dili sa karoon, kaila man nga okasyon ang ekober na'to, muna ako bu't pasabot. Ang legality lang, but anyway.
Lawyer to lawyer, Counselor.
Ang legality naman, Majority Floor Leader is, Jermaine basa sa kani nga.
It does, ah, it does adapt, golden mean here.
Yes, okay, okay.
Ah, let us separate this too. Yeah, item number.
Okay, separate.
Yes, item 2, item, ah, item 13 is, ah, the permit to one day.
One day.
One day, 2 cock, ah, 2 wins cockfight on November 2, 2023, and item 14.
Okay, okay, that is clear?
Yes, is the 3-day stag Derby on December 2022, 22, 2023 at Indahag Square Garden.
Exactly, muna. Ah, because it covers a different ordinance, yes?
Different man, sa lahi man nga okasyon, so ano lang, so salamat, Majority Floor Leader.
Okay, thank you very much, brighty kami si Majority Floor Leader hoy.
Okay, so move to.
Any second? Objection? Yes?
Oh, 13, no.
Abstention, only one abstention.
Okay, there's abstention, and, ah, which one?
13.
The 13, Counselor, Counselor Attorney Joy Abu. Item 13, any objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second, final reading?
Second, any objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item 14 is the, Dirk. Item 14, gana. Ah, ah, item?
14.
14?
14.
Ana.
Item 14, ah, proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 328. Approving the application of the Northern Mindanao Game Fowl Breeders Association, R10 Incorporated. Represented by Mr. Victor P. Cabeltes for a permit to conduct a 3-day stag Derby on December 20 to 22, 20 to 2022, 2023 at the Indahag Square Garden, City Lumboi, Barangay Indahag, this city.
Counselor Roger Abaday, you have the floor?
The same manifestation, ah, Madam Chair and my colleagues, I move to approve that, ah, resolution.
Second.
Any second?
Second.
Objection? Objection? Wala objection ah?
Objection.
Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second, final reading?
Second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item 15, Dirk.
Item 14 is proposed, people.
Ah, for inclusion, ah, for inclusion, Madam Chair, sa, for inclusion, another inclusion. Ah, additional inclusion, item 15.
Second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Ah, Dirk, number, item 15. Item 15 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 528. Requesting Honorable City Mayor Rolando E. Uy to issue an executive order regulating the visiting hours in all public and private cemeteries in Kagandero City during the All Souls Day and All Saints Day as recommended by the Kagandero City Police Office kokpo. Subject to styling, proponent, Counselor Romeo V. Caliso.
May I request Counselor Caliso be recognized, Madam Chair?
Counselor Romeo Caliso, you recognize?
May I move for, for the approval of this then, resolution, Madam Chair?
Second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second, final reading?
Second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Derby no other matters to take up, move for adjournment.
Session adjourn, duga'y patamang kitab ah?
Pa-picture siya kunota, Madam Chair?
Ah, okay, 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 sige, ah, sige, sige, pa-picture siya ta.